I would like to call the Mashpee Public School Committee meeting for February 8th, 2023 to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the religion, the saints, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoak people who have lived and been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Okay, so, next item, we're going to ratify the agenda for February 8th, 2023. Does anyone have any changes? Okay, so I'll entertain the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to run by the agenda of February 8th, 2023.
Okay. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Do you have anyone for public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, and tonight it looks like we have Select Board Member Michaela Wyman-Columbo here to speak to us, so if you want to... And the microphone, just make sure it's kind of close because the TV needs it to pick up for our viewers at home. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity. I think I've mentioned I was appointed to serve as liaison and then my new role is simply delicate conflictive with that. But I'm just so happy to be here. I was lucky enough, right after I started, to go with the superintendent. She was gracious enough to spend a half day with Mr. Cotton and me to take us around all of the schools. It's really clear, you know, there's no hiding if you're not doing a good job in the classroom. And it was really clear in every room we went into, going through the halls. There was a lot of motivation. It was an exciting place to be. You could see the learning take place. So I'm really excited about that. As some of you know, I've spent my entire career in education, over K-12 education, and most recently at the College of Education at UMass Lowell. Even when I was at UMass Lowell, I firmly believe you can't prepare superintendents, principals, assistant principals, or teachers unless you're in the classroom and in the schools. So I spent a lot of time in K-12 schools even then. So I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to support the schools.
Thank you. Is anyone having questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's always nice to know we have the support of the Select Board members, so thank you. All right, and now it is time for our student representative, Delia Forst, to give her report out, please.
Well, good evening, everyone. Due to my last absence in the meeting, I haven't really seen most of you since last year, 2022. It's really hard to believe that we're already in month two, 2023. It's so good to see all of you who I haven't seen since the last meeting. To start off, the first few weeks after winter break were really good and refreshing for all those MMH students. I even like remember talking with my peers and some of them being like, "It's so nice to be back at school," like with a fresh, clean slate after winter break. The HOSA Club met and had members registered for the State Leadership Conference in March, March 18th. Although we won't be competing this year, we're still going to go and take a field trip on Saturday so that we can see the other competitors and what their presentations are. Basically, HOSA Club is like a club with, for anyone who's interested in going into the medical field when they're older. And I think that this club is very unique. It's actually the only, Mashpee is the only school that offers this club on Cape Cod, which is, I'm so grateful. And I'm really appreciative that I'm able to participate in such an amazing club because, like, it's just Mashpee has so many options and like, you really can go into anything that you're really interested in, which I really appreciate. Around a month ago, there was a mental health assembly which was made from a senior project. The senior who put this assembly into the making was Wes. He shared his own experiences and story, and he did an amazing job representing mental health, and a lot of students were positively influenced by this assembly. Right before break, varsity basketball player Hialeah scored her 1,000th point, as I'm sure a lot of you might probably already know. She's a phenomenal basketball player, and I just wanted to congratulate her for that. On a similar topic of sports, the Winter Cheer Team is preparing for their cheer competition on February 15th, which is coming up very, very soon. They're putting so much hard work and dedication, like they're staying later at practices or even practicing on the weekends if they can. And the dedication from them is just really amazing. On the same topic of sports, winter sports are coming to an end, which I was like shocked by. I like just realized that today. I was like, "Oh, my God," like, they're already coming to an end, which is so crazy to me, which means senior nights are coming up. And specifically, the varsity boys' senior night is next week on the 16th. So if you want to go and show your support, that will be then, I believe at 6:30. I'm not 100% sure on the time yet. But with the ending of the winter sports and senior nights, there's also the beginning of spring sports: tennis, soccer, lacrosse, and track. A lot of people are excited for those sports and also sad about their winter sports ending. The spring musical auditions were on the 11th and 12th of January. They were also callbacks on the 13th, and I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone who gathered enough courage to audition for those things because it really does take a lot of courage because you have to like sing and you have to act out. So I wanted to congratulate everyone. I think the spring play will be in March, I believe, April?
Oh, is it April?
Yeah, I think it got moved.
Okay.
April 29th and 30th.
Oh, it's that week?
Yeah.
Well, I'm really excited to see it because I wasn't able to see the first musical this year. Both the school's band and chorus concerts took place recently, although unfortunately I wasn't able to attend the band concert. I did see a few videos, and they were really good, very well orchestrated. The chorus concert also was phenomenal, and I just wanted to send a congratulations to Mr. T. and Ms. Matt Rera, who put these concerts in the making, and they really put all their effort into it. They did a great job. But that's it for this evening. I hope you all have an amazing rest of your night, and I look forward to seeing you all soon.
Thank you, Delia. Anyone have any questions? Okay.
I have one comment.
Yeah, please.
Uh, Delia.
Delia, I apologize.
It's fine.
You mentioned Hialeah, but I just heard the other night that Carver Meyer Peters broke the record for a gay boy or girl for high school basketball.
Wow, yeah.
14... She's the all-time highest scorer, and the season's not done yet.
Yeah, it's like 1,400 and something.
I thought it was in the 1940s, 1990 something.
It was the record, and...
Wow.
She killed it.
She really did.
She's amazing.
I think you add to it, too. It's got to be one of those like records that's like going to be really hard to beat in the future.
And she's what, is she a senior?
She's a senior now.
Okay, so she's resetting that bar, basically. She had a couple more weeks to add to it.
I know.
Turn is played, too. Congratulations to all of our sports and music and everyone, because it sounds like it's been a pretty great couple of months. Thank you. Okay, Darius, you're our representative from the tribe tonight, so welcome.
Thank you guys for having me. Good evening, folks. We've got a lot of things going on. I can't handle a bunch of here. First, I'd like to bring up a part of our Speak Month speaker series. We have Gulebina, who teaches English literature at Old Dominion. And he's been speaking on Apes, which he was a people preacher in Mashpee in the 1820s and 30s. And he's part of the big, the whole football in 1833. That's when Mashpee was a playing town. I've heard Gule speak a few different times on Monday, April 17th. It's amazing. You guys are going to enjoy this presentation, slides, or without slides. So please join in. Go to our website and check it out. Get the link. Right now, as we speak, as I speak, we have six Mashpee High School students down in Washington DC, part of USA, United Southeastern Tribes Organization. They're down in the Talia and Sassman, Whedon, and at the Chaperones and Nersi overseeing, Sovereign Teed, Governance. It's a little kids conference. It's really good. I presented a couple of times down there. You said, "The kid's got a lot out of it," so they act like little professionals.
I saw a picture on Facebook today of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is great, in front of the Capitol. Oh, no, they're smiling. They're adorable.
Did you see the one of them with their presentation? I saw that picture as well.
No, I saw the like, "What?" That one.
We have a lot of tribal departments down there.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I got excited.
So during April vacation, we're also visiting a few different colleges on the southwest, Indian colleges. And we're having high school kids sign up. Deadline is February 15th. Any questions, you go to Talia. We serve in five counties, Bounceville, Plymouth, Bristol, Norfolk, and Suffolk. Application deadline is February 15th for that, guys. Navy Youth, the women, just sadly coming up, is February 11th, between 10 and 4. We've got eight groups of 7 and 10, teens and women, teens and 16 and women, all of our self-defense. And that can never be underlooked right, not this day and hour. So that's very, very important. So it's on our website. I'm going to be in Quashan tomorrow. I'm going to literally hand out our copies to the girls and waivers to be signed by the governance center as they come into town. Tribal Boys, this is my baby right here at Quashan School. We started up June 31st, goes through May 18th, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 6:30, oh, no, sorry, 6:30, 3:30 or 5:00, although it sounds like 3:30 or 5:00, and which then eight points, grades four through six. And we do a lot of cultural enrichment programs, guys. Just this past week, what we've done, we had our Mashpee Medicine Man come in, talk about ceremonial ceremony, what types of plants we use, and why it's important for the next generation to hold on to that and to pass it on. And today, I worked with them on making our medicine bags, which you guys see a few kids going around Quashan having their bags on tomorrow. And we're really proud of, so that's really cool. And tomorrow, we're also, what we're doing, we do field trips, too. So we're visiting elders, an elder named Darrell Wilson, right in Mashpee, to talk about the fire. People think about a fire as, oh, for cooking or heating, but we have a lot of ceremonial fires for different purposes to give that, those kids right there, that whole, like, need to brush. We also have, oh, we started our lunch bunches up in Casey Coombs. Interesting. I did it today. Pre-K.
Interesting.
I wish it was. Pre-K through second grade, and I sat with the pre-Ks on the lunchroom at the table, talking about cultural things, little toys and such. They really enjoyed that. Then kindergarten through second grade came with myself to the caucus room. And what was amazing, I felt amazing, every grade had at least eight kids with them, all travel kids, and they were really into it. So that's, and looking forward to every Wednesday. Might something up there, so a lot by education department. What else we got here? Oh, the Mashpee High School also started lunch bunches. You see Cameron Green there, John Hamlin, Talia up there. Talking about full-time communication connection, educational opportunities, programs, college degree readiness. We have two full scholarships, offering either Mashpee or Quin and Wampanoak youth, gaining proudly recognized groups, native communities, from grades nine through 12, for C education program in summer 2023. Contact John Hamlin. Visit Woods Hole, we're going to be visiting Woods Hole on February 10th. So please contact John Hamlin at interest. We might talk about lunch bunches, C education, and tribal education is also applying for a grant from San Manuel. San Manuel being a mission Indians to work with our seniors for class 2024. And this March 4th, guys, we have family nights planned at the Boys and Girls Club to introduce parents and youth to academic and other opportunities available to the youth, especially at the middle, high school level, which is really important. That's an activity point, as we know. I honestly, as you know, work with a lot of Quashan kids and Casey Coombs. So right now, is what we kind of started to say with Casey Coombs, one every school in Mashpee, that physical presence is very important. So trust me, I know our kids get mad, but they don't see it. They're literally looking arms up, "Hey, where are you at?" So one guy was in hospital. So yeah, so they expect you to be there, and they depend on you. Like all of us do this stuff. Also, I'm going to wrap up with, on March 25th, we're going to, we're having a business set up for Amherst College and for Massachusetts of Amherst also. That's coming up on the 25th. More information is coming up for that. One thing in here is, we're also planning a couple of conferences, guys, for professional development. One Professional Development Day, which is going to be on August 9th, and we just set that date, I think, like three or four days ago. And that's for all educators that just serve. And also, we have another conference going on 27th, 28th, 29th of June. So put those on your calendar. You'll see the applications going up very soon in the agenda. So thank you for having me. Any questions?
Can I add something? The tribe is also running a 10-week cultural course for Mashpee and Balmouth educators. So I only bring it up because we just sent it out two days ago. What day is today? Yeah, I sent it out Monday. And the limit for Mashpee is 25, and we already have 18 people signed up, just in two days. So it's, they don't even have to sign up until next Friday. So...
Is that just out of Mashpee?
Yeah, just out of Mashpee, 18 people in two days. So it's going to be wonderful, and it's going to be held at the middle high school in the library. So that's exciting. We're very grateful and excited for that opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, I should know that. I'm teaching one of those classes.
Oh, yes, you are. I saw your name on the syllabus.
April 3rd, yeah. Me and myself were talking about, we were talking about playing towns, King Cobra's War, and things that happened after we lost the war, which wasn't as pretty. So we got a lot of things going on. We got the Ton of Green there, hanging it up. We have numerous different speakers coming in for that speaker series. But yeah, Mashpee, you guys did that before?
Yeah, we've done it twice.
Voices from...
I took it in 20...
I did, too, although we didn't have you as a guest speaker. I'd have to pop in for that one. I love listening to you speak.
The class we did a couple of years ago, which was what, Voices from the East?
Voices from the first line.
The one in the summer?
First line, right?
Yeah.
You guys were first to sign up.
Yeah, that was good.
We're so lucky to have you in, you know, right here, so.
But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate the information, and hopefully people will take advantage of all those programs that you're offering, so.
Especially what we kind of, really, quite the sadly with the youth, you know, that's so important sometimes. So hopefully we keep that going on.
Again, appreciate all you and the education department do for our students, you know, our shared students.
We get a lot out of it because we're here for one reason, and that's kids, right?
Definitely.
And yeah, so I'm, we're so glad to be in all schools right now in Mashpee, spreading those districts, Bounceville, so yeah.
Again, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Next on the agenda, we've got a vote to approve the minutes from January 18th, which is pages one and two of your packet. Does anyone have any edits?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Good. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Minutes are approved. Okay. Superintendent DeBoer.
Okay. First, I just want to give a quick overview. We had Kalise Warnham, Dr. Kalise Warnham, for her monthly professional development. So we had a half-day on Monday, the 6th this week, and she came down. And again, she's working with a group of middle high school teachers for 90 minutes, and then she shifts and she does all of the staff at the Coombs School for 90 minutes. And I sit in on both of those just so that I can make sure that I can support the learning. And I think the biggest thing that I've seen from the last two sessions is the opportunity to role-play, actual scenarios that she shares that are based on true situations that happen in classrooms, because it is really hard for teachers to gain the skill set to be comfortable with the difficult conversations. So that is one of the biggest takeaways that I have from that, those experiences. And she did talk a lot about being a culturally responsive teacher, and that when you are that way, you're routinely checking your own self for your own biases and assumptions, and you're also not entering situations with sort of the deficit mindset when you think about kids. So it's been really good. We're grateful for that. She also did a workshop last week, I think it was Wednesday night, for parent guardians, and it was on how to talk to children about racism. And I think we had about 52 people there. It had gotten rescheduled from Tuesday night, but it was a great group of people who were there. And if you've never actually sat in on one of her workshops, she's just so engaging and authentic and relates it to herself. And the takeaways were easy to absorb from her talk and her slides as well. So we are going to, we're working on scheduling a second one that would be focused on implicit bias, but very good feedback. In fact, she shared an email that a parent had sent her who attended, and just the reflection of what you're exposing your children to. And she, this parent was talking about Daniel Tiger, which is on PBS, and there was an episode that had to do with Band-Aid color and just the conversation she was able to have with her own son that she felt she was better prepared to have than she would have been without the workshop. So it's just really an excellent, excellent experience. I know that some of our school committee was able to attend as well. In your packet, you have the enrollment update. I don't know if you have any questions on that. This is on the, yeah, you have the one that we passed out. We also have a personnel update. The only changes you see there, we have a special education teacher hired at the Coombs School. That was a vacancy for a couple of months. We're very fortunate to get Stephanie Shawberger, who is very skilled and needed for the students that she's supporting. And then in terms of a resignation, we have Carla Riley as a paraprofessional at MMHS. And so we currently have that paraprofessional opening at MMHS to fill. But we have a person who's basically been interviewed and agreed. She hasn't finished her paperwork yet. And so updates, I'm going to start because Dr. Goulart said she would have come and asked permission to leave after our, her section, but she really is experiencing a lot of pain. So I said, "No, you don't have to come." But I will share out for the Coombs School, if that's okay. Her list is highlighting Darius, who has come in to do the lunch bunches and how welcome they are and very much enjoyed by the students. They did World Read Aloud Day, which was last week, where English, the MMHS English Honor Society students came down to read to the Coombs School students. And talking to one of the high school students who shared how two of the littles had given her these two cards that they made, and she tends to wear her emotions on her sleeve, so it made her cry because they were so thankful for her to be down there. We, they have over 100 students currently participating in their before and after-school clubs, which again are no cost to our families. We celebrated the 100th day of school yesterday with STEM challenges and projects. Funny thing about that is we all seem to have a different 100th day in our heads when we compute, and we double-checked multiple times. However, if you are a kindergartner, preschooler, today would have been your 100th day because you start a day after everyone else. There was a really fabulous chorus concert, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, but I was able to go to that, and the entire, I guess you call that a cafeteria, I'm not sure what that it is, right, because it's got a stage, was full of families. And it was just, and the kids, every song was related to snowmen. And they are adorable with their hand gestures and singing and the fun that they had, and the parents just loved it. And then the PTO, thank you to them. They brought the mad scientist to an evening event for families, and the kids loved them, loved him. So I think that's it for Coombs. So I guess we'll have the middle child come up. Principal O'Brien from the Quashan School.
It's always such an honor to be a member.
You can only play that song once.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. We've been busy at Quashan, I think most recently was last Friday. It was a really, or Monday, I'm sorry. Monday was a really big day for us. We hosted a robotics competition for the backside two robots, and we hosted 22 different teams in all here at Quashan. Jamie Litten was over the top as a STEM teacher and coordinator, robotics coach, did an absolutely tremendous job getting the students here, organizing, and with Amanda House Health and sixth-grade teacher, Heather Johnson, as well. It was just outstanding to see our good in sixth graders competing on that level. We have currently seven different robotics teams, and we're so thankful that we have the most current, the newest generation of robotics equipment. So the investment in the program has just been terrific, and we think it's really going to help. We'll see those, three of those teams or sixth-grade teams, which will go right into the high school next year. So I really feel like this is the start of our feeder program for the high school, and it's really going to make a huge difference, just to have those kids competing on a regional basis. There was schools here from up at Lexington and from Rhode Island, and so it's just really fabulous. I was really excited. Other than that, too, we've also had our concerts, band concert and strings concert, chorus concert. It was great to have those staff in the building. It's been wonderful. I have to say, Darius is also a rock star here at Quashan School. If anything, we have to tell him, stop bringing so many kids, because they just see him, and he's like a magnet. It's been really fabulous having him here in the building, and his support with kids has been terrific. And I did hear at Coombs School with the clubs, we have started our Session Two clubs. We had 190 students reply to our clubs, so the clubs are really busy, and it's great to see that kind of participation in school as well. So we're looking forward to STEM Night coming up on March 2nd, and so we are looking for community support in that. So if anyone has an expertise, like how cold it needs to be to freeze ice cream or anything like that.
Or how do you make, the science behind ice cream? Like the rock salt and the...
Wouldn't that be interesting?
That would be very popular, yes.
So just throwing it out if you know anyone.
I would say, Mom, they can do it.
And the other great highlight that I've been really working on for multiple years is to get a focus in our courtyards. And with Darius' help, we hope to have a presentation soon of a real plan in place moving forward to bringing that Wampanoak courtyard together. So things are good.
One question. Did you get the bleacher issue resolved?
The bleacher issue is in progress. They are coming, I'm not sure the name of the company, but I know they have been secured. They're coming March 1st, 21st through the 23rd. It'll be three days to repair the bleachers, and the gym will be completely out of order for us. We won't be able to use it, the red department will not be able to use it, clubs will be canceled those days. But they do need three full days to be able to get them back in order. If we didn't do it in March, it would have been the end of May. I really need the bleachers. We have a floor hockey game coming up. So we need those bleachers. It does complicate things. It's really unfortunate, but not a surprise when we saw how those bleachers are being used. So hopefully they'll all be back soon, and if you have any...
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we have Dr. Minette from Mashpee Middle High School. And we have Dr. Minette from Mashpee Middle High School.
You know, I followed Aaliyah, and I'm like, you go over so much stuff, but I think our biggest thing is, I don't know if you went over Program Studies Night, the last meeting, so we had, it was my first Program Studies Night, and I think it's the first time I've ever heard of a Program Studies Night, and I'm not sure why, I don't know if it's a cake thing or what, but I'm not sure why every school in America doesn't do a Program Studies Night. It was a great, I wish we could get more people in the building, because it's just a great way to showcase what we do there, and just the energy and the excitement, and I don't know if you were there, but?
I was, yeah.
It's just, it's like, we are highlighting everything that's fantastic about Mashpee Middle High School. So I was very happy with that. I wish, it was a rainy night, so the weather wasn't great. We just did on Monday, well, actually, back up last week, Dr. Wardham's parent presentation was fantastic, blown away. Like, she just, she's an amazing person, and I just love the message that she gives students and staff and parents. So Monday, when part of our staff met with Dr. Wardham for their professional development, we had the ADL peer leaders, the Anti-Defamation League do a presentation for the rest of the staff, which was outstanding, absolutely outstanding. I get goosebumps when I say it, just to have students presenting to staff, and they had like these icebreaker activities that I've never seen, just the interaction and just the relationships. I mean, so much good feedback from that. The hot topics right now that are going on, we just switched over to the second semester, so we're in the middle of, I believe, drop ad ended today. So we're looking at class sizes, there's a few classes that I have looked at, I said if it's less than five, the class, the course isn't running. So if you hear that, that came from me, and we're collapsing that, dissolving it, and resourcing those staff members out to other places where we see. Senior acceptances are coming in, which is super exciting. It's pretty impressive. We have a wall where they're posting on, sports are wrapping up. Yeah, we're kind of like in a weird place right now. I feel like the second half, I wish we did 100th day at the high school, do you think we should?
Yeah.
Don't you think so? Like, we should celebrate the second half, we're on like the downside.
Yeah.
Like, the energy's high, and like, things are good. I feel like we've gotten through the first half of the year, and everybody's kind of found the groove. I think that's what you and I just talked about the other day. We found our groove.
And could you give them a little bit of an update on the e-hall pass, based on like your staff meeting on Monday, that feedback?
Yes, so I actually have a meeting with Suzie Brooks on Friday to just go over the data, but it's, it's all positive. I don't know if you want to speak from a student's perspective, I keep asking students, they don't seem to mind. I think they like the electric part of it, like, it gives them a focus, the teachers love it because there's way less students out, and I can tell you, just walking around the building, there are way less students out roaming the hallways and going to the bathroom, but everybody's accounted for. And I keep going from a safety perspective, it makes my job so much easier, that I can pull that data, and I know exactly where, I actually used it for the first time yesterday, I made an appointment to see a student, and when she came down, I was like, this is awesome. And then when she left, I hit the button, and I have not heard any complaints, knock on wood, so.
I haven't either.
You haven't?
Yeah, it's super easy and convenient, so a lot of my peers are liking it, too.
Yeah, I mean, and the kids come down, and they've got it all together, and we have our teachers who are doing hall duty, we have iPads for them, so they grab an iPad out of the office, and they walk around, and they check in with students, and I call it checks and balances, so.
Yeah, it's so much easier to just like press a few buttons on your phone, rather than like go to the front, write your name, and where you're going and stuff, it's way more convenient, too.
And way less disruptive to teaching. And all the paper we're saving. Right, right. It's a good system. I honestly, I was a little skeptical when we started it, and I think how we rolled it out was perfect. We opted in for those teachers that wanted to pilot it for a couple of weeks, and then when the second semester started, we picked up on that day, so.
And what was nice in that, when everybody became part of the program, that first couple of days, there were emails back and forth where a teacher would ask a question, and another teacher would provide the answer on the sort of the group email. And so it was nice to see how some were experts, and some were helping, and they all answered each other's questions.
And Suzie Brooks created a video, a how-to video for the teachers as well, and I think that her, she worked really hard on coordinating all of that, and I think that's probably a huge reason why it rolled out as well as it did as well. Yeah, she's fantastic, and I can't wait.
You almost said she's amazing.
Yeah, she is. I can't wait to meet with her, because this is where we're really gonna look at the data to see. Right now, we have open passes, and then we can restrict it, so I want to see if we need to restrict it, and there's so many things you can do with the system, it's wild. It's a lot.
So just a couple of questions. One, with my original understanding that this was just on the Chromebooks, is this now available on the students?
So that never came from me, I honestly didn't even know that was an app, but some students put it, they prefer it's, and I've said to them, like, did you put that, they download the app, do you have it on your phone?
Yeah, I have, like, I go to the Safari, but I have friends who have apps, and it just, it already has them logged in, so they just click on it and make a request, and then the teacher approves it. And then when you get back, they turn it off for you, and it's just really convenient.
That was not an expectation for me, but again, I think they like it because they have their phones with them, and it's quick. Any students that I have stopped in the hallway, it's been on their phone, they just show me like, where are you coming from, where are you going?
Because, one, with the understanding that it's just available on the Chromebooks, that's news. Number two, there are certain classes, I believe, where they don't utilize their Chromebooks, so now you're requiring the student to get their Chromebook app, to do a request to go to the restroom, and then the teacher, so it's not as smooth a process as I understand it.
Okay. I know every teacher has it on their Chromebook.
Right, so for example, like a vocal class, you're not gonna be sitting there in chorus with your Chromebook app, right?
You might.
Sometimes the teachers can make passes for you.
That's what I've heard, is that all the teachers have it up, and it's open on there, and again, it would be the student saying, can I go, and then they build a pass.
And while it wasn't, I think at our last meeting, we talked that it's, what the concern I had heard was that it was only a phone app, but it was available on all the Chromebooks. So I heard opposite at our last meeting, what I remember, because this came up last month, and we talked that the equity issue of it, it is on all Chromebooks, but the app I knew wasn't a thing.
The app, I, you know, they're ten steps ahead of us, they figured it out, I didn't even know that it was an app.
But it wasn't required for them to, there's no requirement to download it because there's an?
There was no expectation to be on the phones, it was just on the Chromebooks.
Because that made it equitable and made it accessible to all, and with the teacher being able to do it, that was something we didn't know, so thank you for filling that piece in.
Like, sometimes if students like can't access it from their Chromebook or their phone, the teacher can just create the whole pass for them.
Which is a good.
That's what I did yesterday, I created a pass for a student.
Yeah, and that might have been a piece, I think, we might have been missing, because I know the concern was, you know, that it was only a phone app, and that got clarified, but now again, thank you for.
I think it was the pilot, we figured that out. I don't think we could have told you that necessarily, because we didn't know.
Because it was new, yeah.
So that, that. The rollout of it was honestly perfect, because it gave the teachers who were comfortable doing it, and majority of the teachers jumped right in and wanted to do it. But they worked out all the tweaks, and that email read, I mean, all I put out there was, everybody, today's the day, we're all on it, and then one person put a question, and then somebody answered it, but it was like, nice to see that, I was like, go team.
Yeah, I think just the parents, there was a little, because it was so new, I think some parents heard different things, and they came up with questions, and now we're getting those questions answered.
But I think we did, like, that Friday, after we clarified with the information and my communication.
But now we have even more, so it's kind of, it's nice to hear, yeah, that it's working.
If students are happy, it's like, parents are happy, kids are happy, so I don't know about parents, but students and teachers.
That's all I know.
I didn't say that.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are you good?
No, no. Thank you. Okay, so you also have the athletic director's sports update there, and shows the team, the participation, he had a slightly different number, I have a slightly different number for total students, so it's 22.9% are participating, and I did look back at last year's, and it was 21.3% were participating in the winter sports. You have Consuelo Carroll's report, our director, our outreach coordinator. Just quick highlights, she's connecting with the Chamber in Businesses for College and Career Fair on the 16th. She worked, she's working with four students to help publicize Piano Men, which is this Saturday night at the high school. You should get a ticket for that. Trevi has agreed to give a 10% discount to ticket holders on the night of the concert. She's working on a Civic Career Day for March 3rd. And then she, it was also sort of a last-minute thing, but thank you to Deb Tryonos and others who got involved, but she put together a quick sort of pottery, multi-session pottery class for Southport Falcons, where they're, it's similar to the soup, is it a soupathon?
Bowl?
Soup for the soul.
No, I haven't done that, too, I want to talk for that. We're doing that on Thursday, we're designing.
Soup for the soul. So the kids have created the pottery bowls, one to keep and one that they, you can buy as a visitor $10, and you fill it with soup that the culinary is making, and then you take your bowl home. And then there's other, it's a very busy night at the middle high school that night.
Can I make a suggestion that on the social media data sheet, that we add YouTube posters to that, which means, you know, how many of the guns we are, and just the school media media, have we posted?
Well, the Mashpee Minute is up there every Friday.
Right, so.
Yeah, that.
But if she's doing social media technically, YouTube, she could just pull the numbers. Yeah, it's social, YouTube's another form of social media, so.
I just didn't know she had.
Mrs. Minetski, will you just write that down, so I don't forget?
I mean, it's easy enough to probably make her an administrator, she's got all the access to everything else.
Would you, just be interested to see what I'm exploring through that media?
Thank you, Donna, I agree.
And please subscribe to, what is it?
Falcon Media.
Falcon Media on YouTube, please.
If we get to 1,000 subscribers.
Oh, it's Mashpee Falcon Media.
Yeah.
Yes, everybody should know the wrong place.
Not a bad place.
1,000 subscribers gets us.
Livestream.
Yes, thank you, the ability to livestream.
Which would mean all our sports would be livestreamed, all our concerts would be livestreamed, all of it.
A lot of advantages. Under recognitions and acknowledgements, I have a few. The first one is related to the robotics tournament at the high school, and I have a letter that was sent from the South Shore Technical High School, Mark Aubrey, and I'm just gonna read it. "Good morning, I just wanted to send a sincere thank you on behalf of my leadership team and my robotics coaches Christina Brennan and Robert Gentile for all the support they received on Sunday." This was on the 29th of January. "Rob and Christina report that Amanda Howe was immensely supportive after a communication issue at my school resulted in my robotic team not having their robots or equipment. Amanda stepped right in and up and gave her, our team, equipment so that we would be able to build and participate with robots, an outstanding gesture that greatly improved the day for my robotic team. At South Shore Tech, each week we give out kudo recognitions to staff that has gone above and beyond recently. Please, Amanda and everyone involved with Sunday's event, accept my personal kudos for a job well done." So imagine how stressful that is, is to not have your equipment to compete in a robotics competition. So, yes.
Add just a little bit of additional color to that. So apparently, they loaded the van the night before, in anticipation of coming Sunday to the robotics competition. Unbeknownst to them, the wrestling team used the van, the wrestling coach unloaded the van, you can figure out how from there.
Those poor kids.
Amanda told me that, and kudos to her for stepping up and supporting and really showing what it is to be at Mashpee, to be a part of the team, so.
My next one I wanted to read is from one of our students, Aisha Shafi, and it was to our food services director. Dear, hello, Mr. Delacipretti, did I say that right? Delacipretti. "I hope this email finds you well. I am writing to express my heartfelt gratitude for introducing halal food options in our school cafeteria. As a student who follows the Islamic dietary laws, it is truly a blessing to have access to food that aligns with my beliefs and values. The introduction of halal foods options has not only made it easier for all of us to adhere to my religious practices, but has also created a more inclusive environment for the Muslim students and staff in the school. It is a small yet significant step towards promoting diversity and cultural sensitivity in our community. I would like to thank you for taking the initiative to make this change and for being considerate of the diverse needs and beliefs of the students and staff in our school. Your efforts to accommodate everyone's dietary requirements have made a positive impact and are greatly appreciated. Thank you again for your efforts in creating a welcoming and inclusive environment for everyone in our school community." So that's very nice. Number three is the sharing of the recognition for David Williams, he's a teacher here at the Quashan School. He was selected as the Ocean 107 Teacher of the Month for January, and a parent who had written in says, she says, who has a son, says, "Believe me, when his students get older, they will all look back and name him as a teacher that inspired them the most. He has such a positive attitude and lets the kids know just how much they are appreciated and valued every day as they continue their educational journey. He loves to make sure that his students have the balance of fun and focus to be successful." So we're very grateful to have him, he is an outstanding teacher. This is School Counselors Week, I just want to give a shout out to our amazing counselors, Lindsay Kett, Julianne McCush, Deanne Almeida, Deanna Crowther, Julia Ferrera, Meg Morrison, Lauren Majakamo, Phoebe Lambert, Julia Thompson, and Mary Ellen Walsh. Our schools could not function without these individuals, and they are the most student-centered, do anything that a student needs, they're very supportive and help our staff as well, but they do above and beyond effort every day, so we're grateful to have them. National counselors, School Counselors Week. I want to also acknowledge Mr. Rumberger, he is the World Languages Department Head, and he received recognition, it's called, oops, it's a certificate of appreciation presented to Mashpee Middle High School to express our appreciation for extraordinary work of Tim Rumberger in an international collaborative project called Global Classroom Pair Share 2022, and his invaluable impact on student learning growth. And in Tim's email, he said, "At first, I was disappointed because we didn't get paired with a school in a French or Spanish-speaking country. However, the Turkish and Romanian students and their teachers were so awesome, it turned out to be a great experience for all involved. Every one of the students in the quarter one and quarter two seventh-grade French classes were fully engaged. Talk about evidence of the portrait of a graduate for purposeful collaborator and communicator." So that sounds like it was an interesting activity. I do want to shout out to DPW for last weekend in terms of the cold weather. We were very fortunate compared to some other districts, we only had one pipe freeze incident, and that was at the Koom School, because apparently the boilers shut off during the night, on Friday night. Our problems always tend to be around the sprinkler systems, which I guess it's because they don't really have, I don't know if the water moves a lot in those systems, but anyway, luckily it was not in a classroom, and they had support there all day, Saturday and Sunday, basically attending to it and making sure we were able to have school. So it was just basically the front of the Koom School near the nurse and hallway area, so. And then I do want to also say that on March 6th, we do have an individual who works with Dr. Kalise Wardham coming back to do student assemblies at the Mashpee Middle High School. So that's upcoming. I think that's it.
Just one thought, you might want to talk with DPW about remote alarm system for the buggers systems in the schools, that would alert someone at the DPW or the police station that the buggers shut off over the weekend.
Yeah, I feel like we've had, I don't know, and Ashley might know or not know, I know they did add building checks, which is not a normal routine on the weekend, but I know there are alarm systems, I know my son has a gazillion for water in his house, so, there are little sensors all over the place.
With the technology today.
Yeah, so, yes, we'll have, we'll have Ashley check on. Oh, yeah.
Result on the freezing of pipes.
When Kathy does, when Ashley does her meetings with Catherine, she can follow up with that. Thank you, Ashley. It's a good idea. Any questions about anything?
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the information. Ashley?
Good evening. In your packet are the normal FY23 budget reports. I did receive questions earlier today. I will have to respond to those throughout the West Side of the finance section. I did, they were going to be gone, and I did respond to them in draft form, so I just have to, are there any additional questions? My next question is, is a conjunction with administration about FY24 budget CIP. We are still looking through the FY24 budget process, it sounds like the town manager will be presenting a budget in the next few. At this level, we may get not in the following week, but in the next month, we're working with town halls to make sure we know that date, and I will send that in a confirmation to you. We have postponed our finance committee meeting presentation tomorrow night, and we will postpone it to be on March 2nd, and we work that in combination, I think, with the committee that. CIP met two days last week, and we went over all of our requests, along with having the rest of the DPW requests through experience. They had conversations about those projects on day two, but there were no votes on those projects, and we are reading. And we are reading on February thirtieth to vote. One of the things we did vote on for the CIP approval was to use twenty-seven thousand dollars that we do before the RFQ process for the energy service contract. We are still top fifty D O R to do in the head do that. And we had, we will go out for an RFQ, and we will do the audit process to see what energy savings we can receive when upgrades through our school buildings. If we do not enforce any projects, there is a breakup fee, but it would be approximately that twenty-seven thousand dollars. So we could get a CIP to be able to reapply our funding for that.
Just on, as you recall, that audit will give us sort of a list of all the different things we could do to our buildings to enhance them and improve the situation. So even if they list, you know, a boiler at Coombs or a boiler at Quash, if we say we're going to do that one thing, the twenty-seven thousand goes into the cost of that work. So I'm, we feel confident that they are going to identify several options for us that would be able to be, that would make the twenty-seven thousand very productive.
So, just refresh my memory then, we had, the school committee had set aside ASR funds and school choice funds.
That's on this, you do have that in your little, it's over there underneath the, you're right, right, right there, right, right there. Yeah. At the bottom.
Okay, so can you talk to that as far as where, how does the twenty-seven thousand impact what we've set aside for the Casey Coombs HBAC project?
It would be a part of that three hundred thousand, I guess, for two funds.
So it's, so it's taking out of the three hundred thousand?
Only if, if we go through this process of the RFQ and we find an eligible project, it rolls into it. So it would be a part of the three hundred thousand. If we decide to break away and not do any projects, then yes, it would reduce the twenty, the three hundred thousand dollars amount.
But the twenty-seven thousand is covering all three buildings? Versus just covering the Casey Coombs building?
Yes, but because we are funding a project, that cost rolls into it, covering all three schools, we don't have to allocate separately.
No, but it reduces the funds available.
Only if.
But only if we don't go with the project, that's on the list.
Anything on the list to do.
So if we get the list back and we look at it and we're like, we don't want to do any of that, we'll put it out to bid like the normal process, we're only out the twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Right, so we've set aside three million nine hundred, or five hundred and ninety-five thousand. We're going to take twenty-seven thousand out of that.
Yes.
And some portion of that is applicable to the Casey Coombs, the other part of it is applicable to the other two buildings, which more likely than not, may not happen. Because there's no immediate funding source set aside for that. So part of that twenty-seven thousand that would have been on the Casey Coombs is kind of going nowhere, correct?
So, yes and no, so it's going to be a part, it's a part of the project cost, right? So it's essentially thinking about it the same way as if you think about an OPM cost or the engineering cost, right? You have to pay those costs to get the design stuck. So this is a part of that cost to get the designs and the project going. And we have the option of using those designs or this audit for twenty years if we're eligible for D O R to do any of the projects that they come out with. So while it's upfront cost, yes, using ASR fund, it has long range effects.
To my understanding, conceptually, it's like, let's say they thought a project that cost a hundred thousand dollars and twenty-seven thousand dollars would be the cost for that whole thing. We only end up paying seventy-three thousand dollars to that, to do that hundred thousand dollar project. It's not like, add the twenty-seven thousand on to the hundred thousand, you know?
Yeah, it gets rolled in.
And again, we're still in the process of working with D O R to confirm that we're eligible for this. So Catherine and I are waiting for a conference call with D O R.
I mean, the diminished, like, if we're taking, from understanding, kind of your concern is that we'll end up, if we, if we do the breakup cost, then we're short the twenty-seven thousand dollars for whatever, whether it's all going to Coombs, whether it's being split between the three schools, because at this time, like, that's just the total amount we're estimating, these are not yet real.
Pro numbers, right? And we have to spend that three hundred thousand by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, which was the other reason why I think we were also, at that last meeting, okay with it, because we have that September deadline for that amount.
All right.
Another item that has come up that we'll need to see at the thirteen is auditorium, we're looking to reupholster seats. Catherine has received a quote, she has funds from her revolving accounts that she'd like to put towards the project. And we're waiting for a final request of how much she'd like the schools to put in, once I know what that is up until two thirty. So it is over twenty-five thousand dollars, the estimate, so we do need to get it.
And so that they, they take the, the seats out and reupholster them off-site. Similar, we just, this year did some of the old library furniture and made it into staff furniture, but it needed to be recovered. So I don't know what, it's Mass Core, who does that? Mass Core is the group that does it and, you know, it does need to be done, it's just the timing is also going to be mid-May to mid-June. So we've figured out most of the rearranging that we need to do.
We need four weeks to do it, and the cost right now is approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Once, Catherine is still working on her final number. We do have an estimate about forty thousand or fifty thousand that she might, might request at the schools, but that's not definite yet. And we would, we would ask the school committee to authorize a school choice fund. Again, this is just to let you know what's going on as we're going to CIP next week, once I have all of the financial records on that.
Can you provide with the next committee meeting update in regard to school choice funds and any potential commitments to the next fiscal year, please?
Do you want me to highlight it right now? We have a school choice fund paper in front of you. Currently, in the fund, we have three point four million dollars. And FY twenty-three, the offset is six hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. FY twenty-four, we have put aside seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And we have right now a very conservative estimate, have two million dollars of school choice, two million to two point five set aside for the B C C project. So one of the steps that we've been taking with the CIP project is working with Desi to ensure that it is eligible for capital project use. That's something that the town was very concerned about, using the school choice funds for capital projects. We've had calls with the Director of Finance for Mashpee, Don Fair, myself, and the Director of Finance for Desi, Rob O'Donnell, the same person we guys had to meet with this summer. And he was able to go through the requirements and that, for this is an eligible cost. So I will be writing a memo to him and they will be getting us confirmation, so if you'd like to. And keeping, so far, with school choice, I've been keeping the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars forward.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Ashley, for that update. Next, we have Subcommittee Liaison Meetings Working Groups, and I think the only one that's met since, our last meeting was the Finance Working Group. And we went over, trying to remember now, it feels like a lifetime ago. We spoke about the budget presentation, I believe, and just making sure we had everything the way we wanted it presented. And we were kind of good moving forward, any updates that weren't, you know, like they had, it was just kind of a presentation of the updates, if I'm remembering correctly?
And Ashley, do you have recollection, because?
Second part of the meeting was talking about our transportation.
Thank you.
That's it, transportation.
Thank you. I'm like, there was something else we talked about.
There was something significant, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, yes, we talked about the transportation contract and how we are coming up with our contract with the Collaborative. However, I think we agreed to have Ashley, you know, renegotiate with the Collaborative, but put out to bid for the after-school buses potentially, so that we can resolve the issue with the middle high school not having an after-school bus for their programs. So, any update on, or you're still in the process of that, correct?
So I'm not going to be going out to bid for the after-school, but I will be contacting the other vendors in the area, because there are not a vast amount, but I will reach out to the other vendors.
So that was, that was our working group meeting. Okay. All right. Yes, sorry.
Just a question, is the Subcommittee discovering a prospective three-year lookout on the budget?
We didn't at that meeting. I don't see why we couldn't, but we didn't at that meeting.
We haven't, no, we have not updated, but we can do, certainly do that.
Yeah, it was a five-year.
Yeah.
Or a five-year. Just giving what I read in the paper in regard to, you know, the town manager's comments about potential override coming up down the road. We're going to need, where our ducks are lining up, particularly as it comes to that. So I think it would be beneficial if we took that up here, so at least have an idea of where we're heading.
Yep, that sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
So, specifically unassigned or unfinished business, I have a meeting next week with Dr. Monet, Mr. Brody, to go over the Student Advisory Committee. I think it's, you know, again, we're, we're pushing towards hopefully having that election in June, but this is going to be like the next step. So after that meeting, that's on the books, we'll probably have a little bit more to present at the following meeting, but it is moving forward. And I'm excited to have this meeting next week. The school year calendar, the school year twenty-three, twenty-four calendar on page fourteen of the packet.
So you did see this calendar, I believe, in December, maybe, maybe it was, no, you did. And then we contemplated making a shift around the Thanksgiving break, but that became a little more complex. We did do a staff survey, it was about fifty-fifty wanting to switch. So I'm recommending we just leave it as is. The original one that you looked at, the only change, well, there's two changes to the one that you had seen before. The one earlier had a half-day on December twenty-second, we have taken that out. And then we have also made sure that every half-day that you see on the calendar with a slash clearly designates that the afternoon is for staff PD. And then that's the only change, it's traditional in every other way.
Okay. So I, we have a vote on this, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the school year twenty-three, twenty-four calendar.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make that motion, go for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar.
I'm going to have you talk about this, got it right? Thank you. Okay, just need a second on that, we have a motion to approve. Yep.
What are you taking, Mr. Myers?
You can second it, we can have discussion. If you just want to second it, we can discuss it then.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Not trying to rush you, Dawn, I promise. Not rushing you.
Take your time.
I did like the concept of having food there at Thanksgiving, because that aligns a lot with college kids and the time that they have. So siblings and families would have more time to get together. But I know that would be a big change. And if there's not a big desire by the students and/or staff or parents, maybe it's not something to do with FY twenty-four. Maybe it should be something to put on the public opinion survey.
That's full out there.
You got colored versions of it right there. I, I think it could be a separate on its own.
I agree.
One-question Google, you know, form.
I agree.
Somehow we could get a broader.
We can absolutely do that. Yes, we will do that. Not on this survey, but we'll do it.
It needs to be negotiated as well.
No, I know, everything has to be negotiated.
It's not, it's not just constituents.
I know, but if the constituents want it, it's easier to.
Not necessarily, you know that. Okay.
That's it, that's it.
All right, any other discussions? Okay, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So, there is the calendar for next year. Okay, so now, next on the agenda, we have the twenty-two, twenty-three Mashpee Public School Parent Guardian Opinion Survey and Student Survey.
Yeah, I'm not sure why there's a star there, because I don't know that you need to vote on it, because you've looked, but anyway, I will just give you an overview of.
We have to, we didn't vote approval on it, I think we have to like approve that we want it sent, I think that's what the vote is.
I guess, we'll go with, yeah, that sounds good. You have in, in the handout, this sort of timeline related to the survey. You have a one-page double-sided with sort of the final questions that will be on each survey. And then you have an actual copy of each survey, so there's five altogether, there's one for each schools, parents and guardians, and then there's one for fifth and sixth graders at Quashnet and one for seven through twelve. We did have a student focus group on January twenty-third during the day, we also had a parent focus group that night. Both provided good feedback that created edits to the survey. Once I put all the edits in place, I did have some of our parents who were part of the focus group, I sent them a test one and asked them to look for anything else to change and how long did it take? So one parent of a third grader said it took her fifteen minutes, one parent of a tenth grader said it took him ten minutes, and one parent who has two students at MMHS, which means she has to do it twice, took eleven minutes. So. But, so we'll be sending it out on the twenty-seventh, which is the Monday after the break, to the parents and guardians. And then we send a reminder, it's open for two weeks. We will develop a plan with the two principals who are here as to the time of the day that the students will be taking it, so that we get as much participation as we can out of it. Okay. In my mind, I was exploring maybe a potential incentive for anyone that actually completed the survey within the first two days or maybe the first week. We pull, pull names or something for something at a hashtag, we are Mashpee, or some way to get attention to it, to the task.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, did we have to vote on, we voted on it last, no?
I mean, it basically is your survey, it's coming from you.
Right.
So.
I mean, if there's a. I mean, there's an asterisk there, will it break anything if we don't?
You're basically authorizing the survey.
Yeah. All right.
I'll make a motion, have authorized this survey.
All right, any discussion? Okay, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn? And I also vote yes.
And just as a reminder, I, I'll probably provide an update of sort of participation. of sort of participation, but the more detailed sharing is usually July.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, new business. So it looks like Dussey has sent out a few new things for us to look at.
Well, we apparently made the list to get the communication.
So.
It's in your packet.
Yeah, so which one are we looking at first?
So the first one, the first one is for the school committee to vote to restrict enrollment in a Commonwealth of Massachusetts virtual school to 1% of our total enrollment. They send that out to any district that has hit that point. We, when they sent it out, we had 15 students, but I know of a student that just started in February. So we have 16. Any student that's already there remains there as long as they choose to. They're not kicked out or anything.
And if the student wants to and it's not open, they have options for other, like they, like if they want the virtual school.
They'd have to explore other options, but it wouldn't be something that.
That we would.
Right. It's not a public, yeah. And that is a vote that you take first and then there's a letter that then I have to send in, which is worded basically as a template.
Okay, so I'll take a motion on this. Let's move forward.
I'll make a motion to restrict enrollment in the Commonwealth Virtual High School to 1% of Mashpee's total student enrollment.
It's not just high school though, right? It's K through 12, correct?
Yeah, I wouldn't use the word high in there.
I'm sorry, it's total student.
Matt, the motion, Massachusetts Virtual School.
You said Virtual High School.
I'm sorry. Virtual school. CMDS, 1% of Mashpee's total student enrollment. Does that also include preschool or not?
It says on this K to 12, so I would say no.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for the vote. Matt?
Yes.
Don? And I also vote yes.
Make a motion to authorize the student attendance to the Massachusetts Department of Education Secondary Education. Not if it's a school committee did vote to restrict the CMDS enrollment.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Hey, it looks like we have some updates to the student handbooks to vote on next, which I believe that's page 15 in our packet.
So Dr. Hanscom is going to give you just a why behind it.
So in, as of November 8, 2022, there were new regulations around suspensions in schools that came out. It was a mental health bill that got passed at the last minute in the last legislative session. And this piece was jumped, was put on to that mental health bill. Dussey didn't know it was kind of like, it just sort of came out of nowhere. And what it says is that it changes the language around the rights of principals and assistant principals to suspend. And so we need to put this language in our handbook to align with that requirement. Just as an aside, we had Sarah Spatafor, the district's attorney, trained all of the deans, assistant principals, principals, and other administrators in this new, in this, with this new requirement. We also have updated our procedures around suspensions as well to align with this. But we are, we need to be aligned with the regs. And so this language we are requesting goes into our handbooks as today.
By looking at it, it doesn't look like it's just completed across the board. It seems like there's a couple of caveats in here on like things that make sense, like if weapons or something like that or something that's like extreme.
It really hits, there's 37H, there's 37H and a half, and there's 37H and three quarters. These are laws around student discipline. H is a felony, 37H, 37H and a half, or H, 37H is assault on a staff member, I think. 37H and a half is a felony. And then 37H and three quarters is everything else. And it used to be, I shouldn't say it used to be. What it is now is that before under 37H and three quarters, if a principal or their designated is suspending, they have to have tried and documented alternative remedies to suspension prior to that. The good news is we've been doing that forever. We don't just go to suspension. Our suspension rates are low, but we have to be able to document that in new ways. And so one of the cool things about it that I think, because I was really frustrated when this came out because I just thought it just adds a layer of paperwork that is really unnecessary. But one of the cool things that came out of this was in our work with Sarah and as a team, we came up with a really robust list of alternative remedies that now we've learned from each other what each building is doing. And a lot of it is around restorative justice and conflict resolution and peer mediation and things like that. So it's not like a heavy lift. It's just good practice. But we, like I said, from a legal perspective, we really need to make sure that the handbooks are aligned.
Yeah, I think, thank you for explaining like that because I just think like sometimes when people like re-watch this, they'd be like, wait, so that means that you can't, you know, I mean, like I think that like really highlights that it's like, you know, we're really creating a situation here where it's like, instead of just straight to a suspension, you guys are like, you know, benign one points the same way from the same, like, you know, repercussions.
Right, and still there's that caveat for felonies or assaults that, on a staff member that you can immediately.
Yeah.
If you need to.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve this addition to the parent-student handbooks.
So I'll vote to approve addition to parent-student handbooks, alternative remedies with disciplinary consequences.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just a question, does this also affect our school committee policies?
Uh, no. Your policy doesn't spell out what the principal does. It just lines up with the laws. So no, you don't need to add this in.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, and it looks like we have another vote to adjust our meeting schedule. We had a change, I believe, to move the March meeting.
I believe, so this was related to a potential NOAA opportunity that our MMHS students and some other high school students might be able to take advantage of, hosted at the Mashpee Middle High School. I don't think Nicole had a confirmation yet, but the date was March 15th. So I think to be safe, if we move the March meeting to March 8th, that leaves the 15th open for the potential of this event.
Oh, are you checking?
Yeah, I was making sure I didn't make a conflict with that there was anything else.
Does that conflict with collaborative?
I believe that's, yeah. Do you have a conflict with collaborative on the eighth?
Yeah, uh, no. There's this second.
Okay. I believe I answered via the text that that date was fine with me, so.
Yeah, same.
Okay. Yep.
Do I capture, first thing, the April schedule? Oh, right, did the April one?
Yes, the April one has already been moved. This is to move the March one from the 15th to the 8th.
Yeah, so I'll make that motion to move the vertically scheduled March 15th meeting to March 8th, 2023.
It will? You sure? Well, that'll be two in a row, you sure? All right. It's up to you, you're, I'll let you make your decision. Okay, so we have a motion, needs to be seconded?
Seconded.
All right. Okay. Tonight it was this one. Okay, and I have a feeling in March, the March one might be a pretty interesting one too, but you know, hey. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don? Who?
Seven o'clock.
No.
Don, I'm on record time here. Thank you. I also, so did you, did you get Don's vote, Sherry? And I am also voting yes, so.
And just so you know, there'll probably be an executive session on that March 8th one.
Yes.
Okay, speaking of the collaborative, this past Friday, we had the Cape Cod Collaborative and Mask Division 7 Legislative Breakfast via Zoom. I was there, Superintendent DeBoer, Assistant Superintendent Hanscom. Oh, I thought I saw you for a brief moment. Okay, never mind. Thought I saw your name pop up. I'm making that up.
I could have pretended and gotten credit for it.
You should have just been like, yes.
But I was home sick, so I really was not there.
Sure, sorry. Again, it's been a week. And Nicole was there. Don, were you also? Okay, I know I was there, did you? Okay. I didn't like scroll through the Zoom to see who was there, apparently, because I would have noticed other things. But it was a really great opportunity. We had our representatives, for those who don't know what that is, the Cape Cod Collaborative coordinates breakfast, so to speak. It's been held via Zoom for the last three years now.
It's a tasty breakfast, I'd say.
Basically, it's whatever you make for yourself. But yeah, it's a great opportunity for our state representatives, both our senators and representatives, to come and speak with the various schools, superintendents and school committee members who attend. There was an agenda, transportation, staffing, recruitment and retention, and the third was, we were put on transportation. That was our breakout room, so. They had like, you have a chance to kind of speak directly to your representative, which is very useful. So we had, I think we had, Sarah, we, we had a representative, we had somebody's assistant, and I know Representative Vieira kind of came late, so he didn't quite make it into our room. But we had a really interesting discussion about transportation and the challenges that school districts on the Cape are facing in terms of transportation. Little talk about electric busing. Just kind of how, how to get bus drivers, how the collaborative operates and kind of talking. We were, Superintendent DeBoer did a great share out of how Mashpee works with the collaborative and utilizes their busing services and just kind of our experience, which was, I think, very, you know, interesting to hear. If you haven't heard that, you know, in other school districts, we're definitely interested in that share out. And just, it's a great time for us as school committee, school committee members and legislative authorities to kind of understand what's going on and what the needs in our school districts on the Cape are. And then we kind of come back together and we heard from, you know, Senator Sears, Senator Moran, we heard, actually Sue couldn't be there because she was, Sarah Peak, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We heard from.
There was another one that I wasn't sure where he represented.
Yeah, but it was, it's, it's an interesting event and it was, it was helpful, I think, to kind of understand what some of the other districts are facing in terms of at least transportation because that was the room, again, that we were put in.
Yeah, when they came back as a whole group, there was conversation around staffing and really housing, the housing issue on the Cape and different creative ways that some towns are trying to go at that because for newer teachers, you really have to have a few roommates, which is probably true in many professions when you're young. You can't live too many places. But luckily for some of our staffing, well, not luckily because they tend to be more expensive people to hire, but a lot have moved back to the Cape who are skilled teachers, so the housing is not the issue for them. But we do need to do something. I'd like to create a little teacher partnership with the Commons for some rental units, specifically for teachers, so I'm gonna reach out.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah.
So yes, that was on Friday and anytime you see those emails, I highly recommend, some of them have been very interesting, like the learning lunches, but this one is kind of the annual event and I appreciate our representatives taking the time to sit with us and listen. Upcoming events on page 17.
The only thing to point out is that boys' basketball game